At least I can, I can flex and I can move my legs around. And I, in the, when the weather clears up and everything like that, I'll be able to walk and get on the vice, you know, the exercise bike, that kind of thing.
Good.
Yeah.
Where is Mike? Oh, there is Mike.
Mike is lost in cyberspace?
We have Rich on, Steve on.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Is the Brady Bunch here?
I thought this was laughing, but okay.
Or the Hollywood Squares?
Hollywood Squares, yes.
If that's Harry Shortwood, sideline of our.
I'll take David Dermott.
All right, we got, I think we had everybody on, right? Or no?
Yes.
Let's on, Richie's on, Steve's on. Howie's on.
That's wrong.
And we're ready, and we're ready to go. Okay, score it back, gets to make a motion to.
Motion to close executive meeting?
Motion to close the executive session?
Motion to come back into regular meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Andrew Pittsker, seconded by Kristen Wheaton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Uh, we'll make a motion to open to the public.
I'll make the motion open to the public.
I'll second it.
Motion by Paul Carney, seconded by David Dermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Is there any public?
Um, well, there are two people in the public, but I don't see anybody raising their hands, and I did not receive any, um, emails from anybody? Or calls, voicemails, anything about reading comments into the record, so I think we're okay to move on.
Somebody make a motion to close to the public?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dave McDermott, seconded by Andrew Pittsker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, approval of bills, resolution twenty-one dash zero three.
Oh, so, um, we're actually, yes, so there is, there is no resolution, we only had two bills, so I figured we just hold off. It was like three hundred dollars, so we're just gonna hold off to the next meeting to do bills.
That's awesome. Uh, next on the agenda, uh, approval of minutes from January seventh, two thousand twenty, regular meeting. Everybody have a chance to review the regular, uh, the minutes from January seventh? Any comments, concerns?
I don't have any.
Um, I just want to make one change, um, in the statement of compliance, when it was copied over, the date wasn't changed from January twenty twenty to December, so it just, that date will be changed.
Any other, any other comments, anybody? And make a motion, do I entertain a motion to approve with that minor change, uh, the minutes from January seventh, two thousand twenty-one? That's two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty?
January seventh, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
On the agenda, it says twenty twenty.
Oh, sorry about that.
Oops.
Sorry.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-one, and the set.
It's twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Uh, anybody want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes for January seventh, twenty twenty-one at seven P M.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Motion by Andrew Pittsker, seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Moving on to, uh, resolution, uh, twenty-one dash zero four, authorizing the award of a required disclosure contract with Ferrari Construction for the air release valve replacement. Is there any, any, any questions of everyone familiar with what this is concerning? I did not want you to explain what this is for.
Yeah, sure, so, um, so Ferrari Construction was awarded, um, the portion of what we have to do, um, for the force main evaluation. They were awarded already, um, and I issued a P O for, um, the pressure gauge that needs to be installed for the pump station, so they're handling that, but because they're gonna go over the seventeen thousand five hundred dollar threshold for pay to play, they needed to fill out all the disclosure stuff, and we needed to do a resolution to allow them to go over that. So even though, you know, we're not going above the bid threshold, we still had to do a resolution.
Now, in regards to the cost of this, is this something that actually, once we pay this, goes into the grants we were talking about before, when we were evaluating force mains and, uh, the pump stations?
Yeah, so, um, it's a part, it's a part of the asset management plan, so, um, the M U A will be reimbursed for these amounts. Once we pay them out, um, we'll get reimbursed from the township, and then the township will, well, the township, me, I will submit, um, to the, uh, through I Bank to get reimbursed for that.
Yeah, this is all part of the asset management, uh, grant program.
Just so that everybody's aware of it, that this money that we're spending here will be free and clear once we get through all of this and it's filed. Great. I motion.
Go ahead, make, make, Andy, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash oh four.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Andrew Pittsker, seconded by Kristen Wheaton. Uh, roll call?
Mike Fury?
Yes.
Paul Carney?
Yes.
Dave McDermott?
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton?
Yes.
Andrew Pittsker?
Yes.
I'll, okay, uh, I'm gonna turn over, um, number nine to you, Danelle, could you take that?
Yeah, sure, so we just need, this is our, um, twenty twenty-one budget, we have to do a public hearing for it, so we'll need to open the meeting to the public, if anybody would like to speak, um, and then we will have our resolution to adopt the budget afterwards. And obviously, um, you guys can make comments at any point if you, if you wanted to, I know we discussed it a little bit last time, uh, but you can feel free to speak about it, so we would just need a motion to open to the public for the public hearing portion.
Entertain a motion to open to the public for, for the budget, two thousand twenty-one budget?
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. No members, is there any members of the public?
There are no members of the public.
All right, do I hear a motion to close to the public?
Motion to close to the public for public comment?
I'll second it.
Motion by Andy Pittsker, seconded by Dave McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? So, resolution number ten, resolution twenty-one dash oh five, is the two thousand twenty-one, uh, budget adoption? Is any, any, uh, any comments, concerns about the, about this budget?
Uh, Danelle, as far as I can tell, the updated budget numbers are posted on the, uh, website?
Yes.
Okay, so we are, we have that, all the details are up to date as of what this approval is for?
Correct, and then once, um, it gets approved, the updated, the adopted one will be posted as well.
Okay, and we have not gotten any emails or correspondence from anybody regarding this budget?
No, and we have approval from the state. We don't have, uh, other correspondence regarding the budget, no.
All right, for the record.
We must be doing a great job.
I motioned who approved budget, uh, resolution twenty-one oh five for the twenty twenty-one adopted budget resolution.
Second it.
Fact, motion made by Andrew Pittsker, seconded by Dave McDermott, you have to take a roll call?
Yes. Mike Fury?
Yes.
Paul Carney?
Yes.
Dave McDermott?
Yes.
Kristen Wheaton?
Yes.
Andrew Pittsker?
Yes.
Okay, well, either way, uh, Danelle, you want to do a administrator update first or a licensed operator update?
Yeah, um, I can just quickly update, um, it's not a lot, but I will let you guys know, um, the guys actually did go to some general safety training yesterday. Um, we originally thought that it was confined space, and it was a little bit of confined space, but it was other things too, so the guys went to that yesterday. Um, I did reach out to a few companies about the initial confined space training, that's like the big long course that they have, it's not a long course, but it's a full day course. Um, so I'm coordinating with the township fire departments, because they have about twenty people that want to get confined space trained, so I figure we could just do it at once, um, and hopefully get a better pricing on that. Um, since the budget's already passed, uh, now we can start moving on additional purchases for backup pumps and other items in our capital list for this year. Um, we did already, I do already have a purchase order for, I think, two pumps, um, that we need to have, uh, but we'll have some other ones for backups. Um, Acme did contact us yesterday with a, a letter from, uh, their engineer, um, so they did go and get an engineer. I will say though, in the letter, he did acknowledge that we are using a standard calculation for E D U's, um, but then they asked for a decrease of fifty percent in their total, um, allocation for E D U's, and their issue, you know, they're, they're saying that it should be based on water usage, um. We, we already talked about that, but I just want to talk to you on that, um, we're.
Without, you know, Danelle, without, um, I, I haven't read it yet. Um, one of the things we talked about is, um, their vacancy, and, and we did talk to, you know, the owner of Acme at the last meeting, we said to them, if there is vacancies, that they would have to address that in some kind of, I mean, did they address that in that documentation, any kind of the vacancies?
No. No, we asked for, of what, um, you know, what units are vacant, because obviously they have calculations for those units.
Right.
Um, and I have not received that.
No, and I drove by there today, there are four units that are vacant.
Right, so, so, um, just to stay on that, um, is, does everybody agree that, um, if we're gonna respond to that, do we respond to, Danelle respond and say, you know, we agreed, we wanted you to address your vacancies, and then we would consider a hardship case based on, on vacancies? Do you, do you want to do that, and that, that should be the response to them, or how do you, how do you want to, how do you want to respond? Because.
Uh, this is Steve, the spreadsheet they provided does indicate actually, uh, one, two, three, four, five vacancies.
Wait, I'm sorry, I just brought it up, Steve, at the same time you were saying that, and I'm like, oh, I, I just saw that, um, yeah, they do have it. I don't see the number of E D U's that these are calculated for, though.
Yeah, I guess you could, uh, you could do the math.
Go back into it.
Yeah.
They, they said four, five vacancies, I mean, I want to buy the stores today, there's one that's under construction.
Yeah, they have.
I'm sorry. They have unit one, unit six, unit seven, unit nine, and unit eleven, there's two, uh, asterisks. Unit eleven has an asterisk regarding the bagel store, um, so maybe there is four, there's an asterisk next to one of the vacancies.
And did they, did they total up the E D U's, or, or is it, is it not that?
No, they did a calculation for flow, but, you know, and which could easily be calculated to E D U's for those, um, and for those units. It's not much there, you know, the, some of the smaller, uh, smaller, uh, smaller flows.
All right, so how, how does the M U A want to respond to this, because they, Danelle, uh, you're, they have not paid their bill for two thousand twenty, right?
Yeah, they didn't pay anything for twenty twenty.
So they owe for two thousand twenty, um, you know, is the position, go ahead.
My, my thought is that they approached us at the end of twenty twenty in regard to their billing. Um, that doesn't take away what they owe for twenty twenty. If, if at some point we want to go forward and possibly, you know, uh, you know, decide that maybe they are paying too much or not, you know, that's still to be decided, and then their rate changes, well then, from that point forward, they should be able to make the difference in payment. That being said, they still owe us for a full year, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, so is it, so is the position?
You can't renegotiate, you know, by not paying, that, that doesn't work that way, you still owe for, you still owe for what you owe.
Right, right, I, I hear you, so is the position of the M U A, and I'm, I'm putting this out there, because we're eventually gonna have to respond, is that the position is, um, you know, pay the, pay the bills, pay your twenty twenty bill, and then, and then we'll, uh, we'll listen to a hardship, we'll listen to your hardship case.
Well, before we go through that, Steve, one of the things we need to do is probably do a reevaluation based on our calculations of what the E D U's are, less those four slash five buildings. So just because they go from fifty-six point nine five, they want us to bring it down to twenty point five, they're basing it on flow rate, we should base it on the calculate, the hard calculations we do, because if we go to this, this is a slippery slope for other users in the, in the future.
Yep, because I'm sure you're just billing based upon, um, your regulations, so, um, if you accounted for the vacancies, it'd maybe be ten percent discount as opposed to sixty percent discount.
Exactly, so I'm sitting there saying, all right, this is your calculation, but to be fair to all rate users, because if we do this, we're gonna have a cascading effect of issues that are not fair to rate payers. So I, that's where I am at with it, but I'm also in agreement with, um, Paul, is that if you want to negotiate in good faith, you need to pay up your bills ahead of time as well.
All right, Rich, Rich Wenner, I, um, what do you, uh, what is your opinion, what's your, what's your legal opinion?
On which issue, I mean, on how the M U A treats the twenty twenty outstanding, or addressing the letter that was sent today?
Well, uh, uh, you know, should, should, should we, should we address it, should we not address it? Should we, I guess, you know, what do we do about the outstanding bills, I mean, that, that's really the question, they haven't paid the bill, and what do you, what do you do with that?
Right, so, uh, to Andy and Paul's point, I wouldn't have any, um, conversation with the owners at all until they become current on twenty twenty. This was not an issue that was raised in two thousand nineteen, even if it was raised in two thousand nineteen, which it wasn't, they still have an obligation to pay, many of the arguments that we discussed, uh, an executive apply here as well. Um, and should they, you know, uh, get a reduction in the E D U allocation? That would be done by application to the M U A with supporting documentation based upon the vacancy rates that they're experiencing, and then do a commensurate reduction in the E U count, but at this point, they're not acting in good faith, so I wouldn't have any kind of, you know, a concern, or any kind of, um, you know, constructive conversation with them before they have made themselves whole, made the M U A whole.
Okay. All right, I, I just want to bring that up and, and get it out, um, that, that's okay. Danelle, you want, anybody else about, about that, this issue, or do you have any comments, or, and then we'll, we'll move on?
Based on what Rich just said, that a letter needs to go back to them saying, we would like to negotiate in good faith, but before we do, that.
You have to pay your bill.
You pay your bill, and in the meantime, the actions that we can take in the, in the background is to do it on it, on the E D U's on those building again, so we have our homework done.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Andy that, Steve, if you could just check their calculations and get back to us at the next meeting, that would be, that'd be great.
You know, I, I brought something up a while.
I can read his lips.
When, when.
Yeah, you're muted.
I was just gonna say, um, you know, they give square footage of the units and employees and seats in the restaurants and whatnot. Um, we could either try to verify that or assume it's factual, I'm not sure which way you'd want to go.
Yeah, it's just, I, I would like, yeah, I'd like to look it over and then, and give us, you know, the next meeting tells, you know, what do you think, and, because just to check the facts.
Yep.
You know, but we're go, we're going on something on, on, on supposed meters they installed. We don't know the accuracy, um, of the meters, we don't know if they're on all the time, you know, the, the, this is the kind of thing, and it's, I'm just playing devil's advocate on that, this part of it. Those things are manipulated, it's like turning a back end odometer on a car, but not, not in the same way, you know, you, you, you could do whatever you want with a meter and come up with numbers that are favorable to you. So are we gonna take them on faith, on, on how many, on what their supposed gallonage is? Or are we just gonna go by E D U's per seats in a restaurant?
Yeah.
We have to go by E D U's, we have to go by E D U's.
That's what I think, we don't build with.
No, because if, if we, if we make it gallons for them, you know, as Andy's saying before, we're, we're, it's Pandora's, but everybody is gonna want to go on, on down.
Right, yeah, we, 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 yeah, we're definitely agreement, we're not going down that, that, that path.
So that's where I had a little concern about the word negotiation, I don't think we're negotiating anything, I think we're maybe recalculating, you know, based on vacancies.
Right.
But.
As I said, we do an audit, we're willing to do an audit of the, the property.
Yeah, an audit, mhm.
Yeah, vacant, on vacancies.
All right, well, we, we go back, we measured its square footage, we count the number of bathrooms, we, you know, see how many number of employees, as Steve has mentioned, we'll give them a full viewpoint on it, and then, based on what we see, here's the adjustment in your E D U's, because that's the fair way that we've done other people who, uh, for instance, uh, the Great Gorge, we had somebody who had a two bedroom that went down to a one bedroom. We adjusted for that, that was a fair negotiation. This here, this is completely preposterous to go down sixty percent.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, Chris?
And if we, if we, if we did that for everybody, they're gonna wind up paying the same anyways, right? Because it's, it's just, it's, it's the unit that we're using, it's, it's what we're, it's what we're multiplying by or dividing by, and, uh, so.
I mean, sushi, uh, maybe because of COVID nineteen, their number of seats is really diminished because of that, but we have to go by the number of seats in a restaurant, and that's how we do our calculations. Uh, with Acme, it's, their seats in, for, uh, Starbucks there, plus what you have for bathrooms, plus what you have for number of employees, those are standard calculations based on what we have on our, uh, our website. That's what we, everybody's accepted as terms, so, working with them, I could understand Vernon Valley investors, but, and as Paul said, we do not use meters, and your meter's not registered with us, and we have no control over.
All right, all right, thanks, everybody, so, if anybody, uh, Danelle, why don't you continue on?
My report?
Yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt your report, but.
No, it's fine, um, I was speaking notes, um, so we did receive the G I S mapping from Mount McDonald finally, and then, uh, Steve got the number to Paul today, um, with the D E P, so we are looking to set up a meeting, um, with the D E P with Paul to go over, uh, where they are with that, um. I did see the township's updated town center planning map, um, so that is positive about the changes that they made there. Um, but I know that they did not include, uh, legends in that map, so I, I guess we'll see what, um, the D E P has to say about that. And then, um, I also spoke with bond council, I know there was a question, Andrew, you had brought up about the financing timeline, um, for pump station two, and how we would move forward with that, so I did reach out, um, to Bob Byenfield for the township for bond council, um, and he basically said, we really just wait until the D E P's, until I Bank approves the project, um, which obviously takes time, Steve, you know, when Steve goes through all of that and uploading stuff to them, when we get final approval from them, that's when we would move on that bond ordinance, and it really doesn't take long to do a bond ordinance, it would be its own ordinance by itself, we're not gonna mix it in with other debt. Um, and it would be like a one month, probably a month, maybe a six week turnaround on that, so, we'll just move it into the timeline as things hopefully move forward, um, with pump station two, and Steve, to let you know, I did email Dave after I got your email today. I know it's hard to get in touch with him, I don't understand why. I have no idea. And that's it, that's my report, um, I don't know if Howie has anything specific to report on?
Yeah, Howie, we'll turn it over to Howie, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, comment, we had two backups the last week, in the condos, both taken care of with, uh, little to no spills. I don't know, one at purgatory. And then the other one was, uh, just up, uh, just up the road a little bit, but it was grease. And it was pretty heavy grease, at one point, I think it was probably about two feet long, came through the pipe, and probably about eight inches.
Where was that, Howie?
That was on, uh, purgatory. That came up out of the manhole. But that was just a little bit of spill that came up, they caught it in time. And then other than that, uh, I think Mike, you know, uh, Mike came in and checked our pump station one for the, uh, the crane.
Yeah, yeah, why don't you explain to, to everyone, uh, what happened there?
Well, we had Mike's mobile come in and check our, uh, crane or hoist out for pumps. Um, it was not greased, it was lacking gear oil. They put it in, they got it working somewhat, it will lift the pump out. But upon, you know, fixing that, they noticed that the pump that was, the newer one that was installed was not hooked up correctly to be pulled, so it was fighting the whole crank, basically just pinching it on the line. But then while they were down inside there, pump one, as they pumped it down, it was hammering, and the whole bottom of pump one is loose, so every time that it shuts down, the hammer, it moves a couple inches. So Mike, uh, suggested that that get fixed ASAP before we lose a pipe, or before the pipe explodes from the hammering effect.
Right. Yeah, so, uh, he, he wrote an, an email about what he found. And then I, I, Danelle, he also gave you an estimate for the repairs?
Yes. Um, where is it? I don't have it.
The other thing, Howie, Howie, just before we go, uh, I, I, Howie, I had the question, wasn't there like a pump, there was a wiring issue with the, the backup pump? Like the wire was hanging into, in, in the, in the, in the wet well, and it wouldn't have worked any, no matter, you know, the backup pump, is that true?
The pump, the, uh, the wire that they noticed that was in there, they thought it was a flow at first, but it ended up being just a seal sensor. That was not underneath that one there, that was at previous, uh, when he came there the first time. I guess months back, when he came in the first time there, that was a, uh, where the wire was up underneath the, uh, motor.
Right, so, so he provided a, a cost estimate to, to, to do all the work? Right?
Yeah.
And, and then, Danelle, what I want you to do is, can you, can you share his email with the entire M U A?
Yeah, sure.
And, and then also, and also his, um, his quote, his estimate?
Yeah, um, I need. He did estimate us, um, around six thousand eight hundred, but when speaking with him, he thinks it's only gonna take about four or five hours, so I'm putting it in as less than that, because I anticipated taking as long, um, I think I asked him, like, six, forty, eight hundred or something like that, but yeah, I'll share emails.
Yeah, he said.
Yeah, so does, yeah. So, so Howie, from your point of view, is, like, and there were so many issues with that wet well, um, uh, was it, and you said it was maintained, like they get it pumped out and maintained once a year, right?
That was our schedule, that they were maintaining them, our cleanouts, a scheduled cleanup for all lift stations and pump stations.
Do you think, do you think that was done on, 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 not in this particular pump station?
From when they got down here, I mean, there was sludge in the bottom, when, when we, uh, when they were there fixing it. I mean, it wasn't that bad, I would say that it was definitely out within the last year, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or, you know, like it definitely hasn't been not cleaned, that's for sure.
So to move ahead, to do those repairs, we just, we just, Danelle, we just approve it and then they go ahead and do it?
Yes.
Is any, any questions from anybody about how, anything else, Howie? Because that was, and the other question I have for you too is the, the next one, is the muffin monster at pump station three? What, what do you, what do you recommend that, that we move, we got to do something? Is, is the best thing to do is purchase the muffin monster and then have somebody remove the old one and then install this one? What do you, what do you think we should do, Howie?
Well, the old one is, is taken out already. It is out and taken apart.
And who, who did that?
The two boys did, with help from one of the guys with a machine.
So let me ask a question then. So that, so we have a, does that mean the pump right now is kind of unprotected without a muffin monster in front of it?
There, there is a difference, there's a ways there, but yes, as of right now, yes, we have nothing there controlling it. If they did put a screen in, then they did that. But that's what we had talked about until we got a muffin monster, but right now, we have nothing. The muffin monster was completely destroyed. The inner, the inner gears, there was no gears even left.
Okay, we, I think we talked about this at the last meeting. Where, where are we in the process of getting a new one?
We haven't gotten, I'm waiting for a quote from, from Jaeger. I, I reached out to him again because he had said he was working on getting pricing for us. We were waiting to get the, oh my gosh, the number that's on top of the muffin monster, the plate, there's like a plate on top of it and he was looking for that. So we got that for him, but I haven't heard back from him. So I reached out again and I'm hoping to hear back.
Yeah, because it would be a shame for something that we have to pay for anyway, which is the muffin monster, to end up having to pay for a pump too, because it's not there. And I, I know it's not on us, it's these vendors getting back. I'm familiar with that merry-go-round ride, but yeah, they gotta, they gotta start moving because I would hate to lose a pump because a vendor is not getting back to us. That would be terrible.
And to follow up with Paul saying, Howie, do you consider this an emergency?
Well, yeah, I mean, we definitely need it. And when Mike was, Mike Mobles was doing that lift station, he did go over there and check out what we had and what type we had, a muffin monster, he was supposed to give us or get a quote for us as well.
Yeah, and I believe he would get it from the same spot. That's one of the few people that, that sell it. So, you know, and when I talk to him, he prefers, you know, the MUA buy it, you know, and then, and then, then somebody install it. So. So, so in your opinion, the important thing, right, and this is, this is what I'm driving at, this is, this is an emergency. And yeah, we, we can't, we can't let this go for, for any longer. So I know we're, we're, you know, at the mercy of the entity selling it, right? But at the least, we should, we should purchase this, then purchase the muffin monster and then, and have this repaired soon. Because Paul's right, the failure to do that will damage the pump and then, and then you, there's a possibility you'll have an overflow. And this is, you know, is not acceptable. So, you know, in my mind, this is an emergency. I want, I'm glad you said, Howie, it's, it's an emergency. And we're going to declare it emergency and, and treat it as one. So, so ergo, I mean, what does everybody think? You know, we need to move quick on this. Does everybody agree?
Well, if you don't, we're leaving our asset vulnerable, leaving the pump asset vulnerable without it being there. And that would be, you know, you just get one wrong thing going through a pump, that means you're going to have to replace a pump and a muffin monster. And let alone, let alone the cleanup and bad publicity if there is an overflow and, and environmental concerns that that brings.
Well, that was the reason why we also removed it because it wasn't moving at all and the weir was backing up.
Oh, yeah, I get, I get that you had to remove it, but now we got to replace it.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, Howie, that, Howie, I give, I actually commend you for doing that. You took, you took the right action and that's, that's really what we want you to do. And removing it is, is the first, you know, first step. Now purchasing is the next one. Now, I, I think Steve, and maybe you could help if you, is this like the only vendor you get a muffin monster or is there, is there an alternative? What, what do you think? I mean, I hate to put you on the spot here, but what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking for a actual muffin monster, you know, there's other companies who make similar products. But if you're looking for an, you know, in those similar products, they, for example, maybe they won't fit in the exact same spot and things like that. So there could be some difficulties with going with a, you know, equivalent product. That's not quite, you know, not quite exactly the same. But as far as if you want to buy a muffin monster, that's it. Jaeger's it for North Jersey.
So, so you're saying the best thing is just stick with Jaeger and wait till they get it to us and then, and try to expedite as fast as possible? Because I mean, that's really what you're saying.
As long as it doesn't drag on too long. If it keeps dragging on, there's probably alternatives you could seek out, but yeah, correct.
Yeah. Well, what does everybody else think? Because anybody have any opinion on this?
Cover your assets.
Yes. Thank you, Chris, and I like that.
Steve, but when it comes to standardized.
That was pretty good.
Yeah, it was. Steve, when it comes to standardized fits and as far as valve sizes and whatnot, shouldn't there be some uniformity here with ASTM standards? Chris says, then, Chris, then no. I mean, I worked in the valve industry and we were able to swap out valves from different companies all the time.
Yeah, well, I mean, this isn't quite the same as a valve, but you might need, you know, different ones have different kind of pieces that connected in, you know, because the, the what do you want to call it? The, 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 the chute there that it's in isn't kind of a, that's not a standard setup either. So probably anything would work, but maybe a little bit of retrofit, but muffin monster would probably work the easiest no matter what.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else? To make similar products if, if we needed to go there.
I think you continue to work for that, but I think we need to have a backup plan ready to, to respect for another muffin monster if this doesn't get done in a timely fashion.
Yeah, like, who's it? It's, boy, and, and there's another manufacturer from New Jersey that a lot of utilities like, I'm drawing a blank right now. You know, similar product, you know, a similar product. Boy, I'm drawing a blank. It's.
Franklin?
Yeah, Franklin Miller. Yeah, yep.
Well, that's, that's, that's a backup plan. Danelle, I, I think, you know, you need to call them, Jaeger tomorrow, and, and then you ask them point blank and say, do you have this? Is it in stock? Give us a price. If we don't hear back by, by tomorrow, or, you know, or by next week, you know, with, with a definite purchase and getting it here, by the backup plan is going to be, you know, we'll try, we'll go that route, right, and then get it here. So you at least get the, the part here. Because by the way, it's possible, and I know, because we do, we do a lot of work for a lot of different water and wastewater treatment, that, that's, that muffin monster might not even be in stock. And then they might, they might turn around and say to you, yeah, we have it, but it's going to take, you know, eight weeks to get it to you. So that's, it is, like, this is unacceptable. We, we have to move quick on this and, and, and get it done. So you need answers from Jaeger and you need solid answers on, you know, do you have it? And this cannot drag on because it might be, because if, if it's the muffin monster and they say eight weeks delivery, then, then you're going to the alternative plan. And that's, and it's very possible that it's not available. So can you, can you please call them tomorrow and get an answer and and have an answer by tomorrow? And then, and then when you have an answer, please share that with everybody on the MUA, where we're at.
Definitely, yep.
Anybody else on that? Anything else, Howie? Well, that's enough.
No, that's it. That was it. And then I'll cover the two boys taking their confined space.
Oh, I go back, I want to go back to that confined space. I, you did confined space training yesterday? You did something yet?
It was, it was not just confined space. It was safety training as well.
Was that with, that was at Mike's mobile?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, can you please, Danelle, contact Saul Mill, the, the, the company that did the safety review and ask them about confined space training?
Yeah, I spoke with Dave today and there's another company that I've been speaking with as well, so.
Yeah, and get some quotes on, you know, and then, and let me ask you about the confined space. Is you do it in person or remote? Is it a problem to do it in person?
Well, when I spoke with, with Dave today, Dave gave me a little bit more information. Paul Mill, and he explained that he will do the class in person. And tell people, he said, and that still allows for social distancing and all the requirements that we need to have because of COVID. His class size. The other company didn't say like what their maximum class size is, so I'll find that out.
Okay. Anything else, Howie?
Nope, that's it.
Any, any questions for Howie?
I, I guess between Danelle and Howie, do you have your project list for what we're going to do for capital improvements completed now?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have the list that we had before. There are some, with all the stuff that we found out from Mike's mobile, I think that there are some other things that I'd like to add to that list, but I mean, the list we have is not, yeah, sorry.
Now we definitely got a couple more things that are prioritized.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to see what that list looks like now.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I agree with Andy. I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
And then, then with that also, I guess was the electrical panels for the lift stations. Have we started to get quotes for getting that done?
We have quotes for the panels. So we, we have quotes on almost everything for our capital list. Because I needed to know that if we needed to do any resolutions and stuff, but we have quotes for all of that stuff so we can move forward once we, you know, we pass this budget. So once the budget's in the system, I can move forward with it.
Okay, is there any work that Steve needs to do for us on these areas?
For the capitals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let me interject, along with Andy saying, and this is for Howie and Danelle, get together and take that list and then put it in priority order from starting with one being the highest priority and whatever, whatever order you think it should be in and then, and then share that entire list with the entire MUA.
Okay.
Okay.
And that would, that would help you, right, Andy?
Yeah, and the reason for making sure, Howie, you get this, this stuff done is that it does reduce your, your, you and your guys workload and everything is operational so that we don't have all these emergency callouts or breakdowns hopefully in the future. But to continue to stay up with it and the money is we have budgeted for this is to do this, if we need to get it done, we get it done. This is the year to do it.
No, I agree. All right. Another question for Howie?
Going back to my question, Mike, is there anything that Steve needs to be involved in on those lists? So he's aware of it as well.
I think it would be, it would be good if they, once they put it in priority order and then, and then finalize the list, then, then share it with the MUA and then also share it with Steve. And then at the next meeting, we, we could talk about what kind of involvement we need from Dewberry.
Okay, great.
So he give, give him a chance to review it and then we could talk about it at the next meeting.
And I believe we previously talked about potentially the generators.
Yeah.
We'll look at the list.
Yeah, yeah, get the list. Let's, let's finalize the list and get it to everybody, get it to Steve, and then we can, then we can discuss it at the next meeting. I think that's the easiest, best way to do it.
Okay, so that'll be on next, next meeting's agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let's go to number 13, Commissioner's comments. We'll start with Paul Carney.
Surprise everybody. I really don't have any. We covered a lot tonight. I know, it's a first, you know.
It's like a departure from last meeting.
Well, yeah, you know, I, I got it all out two weeks ago.
Thank you, Paul Carney.
Not a problem.
Kristen Wiens.
I, I just have one follow-up for Steve. Did you make any progress with the state on industrial user permitting?
Uh, not, not 100%, but we're, we've talked to a few people and hopefully we can set something up for a more in-depth discussion next week.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Dave McDermott.
Nothing from me. I'm good to go.
Andy Petzker.
No comments.
Oh, good. And our, and our newest member, Harry Shortway, are you still there?
I'm still here. Where you going? Just thank you.
Well, there goes the no hitter.
Harry, do you have nothing to say? Is that true?
Nothing to say.
It's, it's in a shutout.
Really? What just happened here? I, the, I, well, that's good. The only, to move on to me, the only question I have that's open-ended is the other Jean Murphy seat, Danelle, do we, do we need to talk about that? Or, because I know you got some feedback about that.
Yeah, so I, I have not received any notifications that like she wouldn't be attending the meeting. I know we all got the text message that she wouldn't be at the last one, and I think that was only really prompted by Kristen saying like, oh, we have a meeting. So I'm not really sure how the board wants to move, believe that her, her spot, the alternate number one goes through 2025. That's what we have on the website. So if, if she's not going to be active, I don't know what the board wants to do about that.
I, I don't, I don't want to push rules of order, so to speak, but is there something in the bylaws about missing so many meetings or in a row or something like that? I, I think I somewhere along the way, I remember something to that effect.
I actually called that, but Rich corrected me. Rich, if you would like to speak.
Yeah, Rich, Rich, why don't you, yeah, why don't you comment about this?
Happy to. So Commissioner, a Commissioner to the MUA obviously is appointed by the governing body. And the governing body, and only the governing body can remove a Commissioner. I can remove a Commissioner prior to the expiration of that Commissioner's term for neglect of duty or misconduct. So I had a conversation with Danelle and I actually chatted a little bit via text with Andy before tonight's meeting about that process in general. And that process is the governing body, the town council, township council, I should say, would file charges. That's just a fancy way of saying, we're going to give you notice that we're seeking to remove you from the position of Commissioner to the MUA. Those, and you have the right to a hearing. That hearing can be no less than 10 days from the date the charges are issued. It's just the due process that's afforded to members of the Commissioner of any MUA by statute. So you issue the charges that we're to seek to remove you because you have failed to appear X number of meetings to which you were appointed to serve. We're going to have a hearing on X date. Again, no less than 10 days before the, from the issuance, the date of issuance of those charges. And then that Commissioner would have a right to have a hearing before the governing body. State his or her case, governing body says up or down as to whether we want to keep you or get rid of you, and off you go. Whether, you know, missing a meeting or missing two meetings or missing 15 meetings is sufficient cause. It's, you know, devil's always in the details. If someone misses three meetings because they are going on vacation and they allow, and they tell the the MUA accordingly, or they're stick or something like that, then that's, you know, a different situation than a Commission who just kind of goes quiet, right, and has no communication whatsoever. And who, you know, has resigned from another board on which the Commissioner served for whatever reason, you know, they resigned, they're gone. So I think in this situation, not having So I think in this situation, uh, not having heard from Ms. Murphy, at least it's to this meeting and based upon some of the, um, what I believe to be facts surrounding, uh, her, um, current state of affairs in Vernon, I think at a minimum, we should request of the governing body to draft and issue charges seeking the removal of Ms. Murphy from the, um, from the MUA. And again, she would have a right to a hearing and at that point she could state her case before the governing body. Say, I'm sorry, it was a big mistake, you know, I was out of town, I had an accident, whatever it might be, or not, you know, and she doesn't say any of those things. And then either way, she would then be removed by the governing body, but we can't remove her. That's the number one thing I want to press upon everyone tonight.
That's not even something I'm like gearing towards or looking for, looking to do. It's, you know, it could even be something as informal as, are you still going to be involved? You know, that's.
Right.
You know, it doesn't even have to go through the governing body. Just reach out, say, you know, are you still going to be involved? We haven't heard from you. Are you okay? You know, so.
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
That's what we did with Angela several months ago. Uh, so, yeah, I would say either the, the chairman or Danelle, you know, could, could call her and say, hey, you know, are you, are you still planning to participate? If not, you know, please submit your resignation.
Well, the question.
And then if she doesn't, and then if she doesn't, then we take, you know.
Then go with the, right, I agree.
Right, but the question I have, Danelle, have we sent the agenda to her other email?
I don't have another email for her. She would not provide me another email.
All right, so we don't even have a way to reach out to her other than a phone call?
Why wouldn't she still have this login?
She does. I mean, her email is still active. Her Vernon Township email is still active.
Right, because she's still a commissioner, apparently.
All right.
Good point.
Okay. No, it's good, but you know what I'm going to do? I'm, I'm going to call her. I'm going to try to reach out to her. And then, uh, see what, if she responds and, uh, she doesn't respond to me, then, um, then we'll go the path that Rich just described. All right.
Thanks, Mike.
No problem. I'll reach out and, and see what's going on. Uh, that's it for me. Uh, I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second it or whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody. Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Good job.
Good night.